I am just hitting record.
Okay.
All right, so I'll come in and you can give me the background, the status update, and the next steps.
I'd be thrilled to do that.
Okay, perfect. 4.2.5 sidewalks, perhaps this is the same thing. I just wanted the update on the projects. Someone at town meeting had asked about sidewalks. And you said there was work underway on this. So if you aren't prepared to talk about this now, could we put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Because I would like to know where that stands.
Gotcha.
Okay. 4.2.6 Wayne, this is something that you alluded to when we were talking back with 3.1. The creation of a policy for posting hiring and supervision of positions is how I wrote it, but it's really
Well, I would have added this to the agenda anyway. But since we don't have a policy regarding hiring family members, for instance, since we're on that topic. And supervising and if there is a conflict of interest, I think that's something we can definitely have drafted. So Jim, I guess I would ask that you could work with Adam on drafting an initial policy so we can review for our next meeting.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, you do have as a part of the personnel policies and procedures manual. The very general overview under Article 6. Called recruitment and selection. And it has an introductory section, a recruitment section, notice of vacancy, posting and advertisement. Applications, selection, references, application records, appointment, pre-place medical. Other requirements, failure to report nepotism. So you have nepotism supervisors are not allowed to hire or to supervise relatives as defined in the Mass General Law 268. Conflict of interest statute.
There you go.
Well, I don't know who said, there you go, but I'm sorry. No, it wasn't Veronica. What it says. As defined in 268A conflict of interest statute, but 268A provides for a section 19 waiver. So even though the policy states that there can't be, you do have the discretion statutorily, which is bigger than this policy. To provide for a waiver. And that provides bonding of employees, issuance of town property and vacancy exception. Additionally, each union contract has a provision for job posting, bidding and hiring. So whether it's the supervisors, union, the highway water, union, the clerical union. Or the police. We do have those in place contractually already, so any change to those would require a negotiation to agreement. At the bargaining table. And lastly, in section 710 of the charter, there is a provision that details what to do when a vacancy in a town office position or employment occurs. So to part of my earlier point, I do know that Carolyn asked you Veronica, if you wanted these things for the packet and you said no. And it would have been helpful, I think, to have this information as a backdrop against which to have the conversation, then each member of the board would have had it. And we would know that we already have a good deal of this done, some which is in your discretion to change unilaterally. And some that isn't that needs to be done through the bargaining process and bargain to agreement. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you
Yeah, I told her, go ahead, finish.
I'm fine.
I would just
Go ahead, Wayne.
I would just ask that. I don't know when that that policy was written or approved, but I think it could use a once over by Adam.
Yeah, I would agree. I asked her not to put it in there because I wasn't planning to have a long discussion about it. And there is a link which either you or she had sent me to the personnel policies and procedures, or maybe it was Adam. When I requested that. So it didn't, this I was putting on there more because we talked about it at the last meeting. And so I wasn't looking for a specific thing more of a let's get this on the agenda and talk about it.
Okay, candidly, that makes my point Veronica, for the simplicity of us being able to know what your expectation is. We, I won't assume, I just won't, that one or another of those, you're going to require detailed information and another, you just want to kind of put it out there. So if you could let us know, it would, I think, make everything
I'll make sure that I explicit in what I do from now on.
Excellent.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, 4.2.7, Jim, this is actually yours. It was something that you had mentioned at the last meeting that would be on this agenda. And I just put it out there because of and we had an email exchange about this because you you needed to know what I was talking about. And so we did have an email exchange about this one.
That is correct, and you do have a copy of it in your packets at 4.27. So specifically for those following along at home, what we have is a letter addressed to the Board of Selectmen from a citizen. And it has two and a half pages of writing for a letter, and then it has several documents that are attached to it that are referenced in the letter. The letter is written by Linda Johansson. And she makes clear that she is in the first sentence that she is writing and submitting this as a resident. And not as a member of the Board of Health. This isn't a Board of Health request. This is a Linda Johansson citizen of Townsend request. Very globally, what she's suggesting here is that there would be value in looking at the recycling center operation being transferred to the either the highway department or cemetery and parks for operational oversight and control. Did I cover that safely, Linda?
Yes, that was one element. The other element was the cash operation.
Correct, so.
Should this letter be read into the record?
Whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I think the summary was enough. I mean, it's a public document, so.
So it will be on the packet that's available for people online to go and read?
As is required, yes, it will.
Okay.
Linda, is there anything more specific that you'd like to say while we have? The board meeting?
Yeah, I know it's too long to read and to record. I'm very thorough. So basically, just as my observation that I feel that the town needs to move in a direction of consolidating in where they can and where it makes sense. I think that we've heard enough about, you know, nepotism and conflicts of interest. I think that this would solve part of the problem of the operations being under the Board of Health. I don't think that the Board of Health should even be have to do Board of Operations stuff, but I'm just speaking on my behalf, myself. That I feel that a Board of Health is really about policy and they shouldn't even have an operations under them. That that we have. You know, some departments in town that are already established that could potentially take that on. By through a reorganization and it's time that the town starts looking at some of the ways that we can consolidate and reorganize. And the other part is the cashless part of it, you know, and I cite two documents in there. They're both, I believe, from 2015-ish. One is the audit committee and that one, the audit, excuse me, the audit, not committee, but the audit company. You know, recommending that we get rid of or do something to get rid of most of that cash pay method. And go cashless as much as we can, I guess. And that has not been done by the Board of Health in the last five years. So I do not feel I have the Board of Health support on this. And if anybody's wondering why I did it as a resident. It's because I'm concerned as a resident that this will just continue to sit.
And Linda, I don't disagree with you at all. It's something I think we should should at least explore as to what it is going to entail. So if we do transfer to parks and cemeteries, what does that mean to Rogers Crew and his budget?
Correct.
That's my second thing. And two, I am 1,000% behind you about cashless. Seeing that seems to be the society that we're living in right now. I don't think anybody gets changed anymore. Is the ability to do that. I doubt there's internet up there. And that would obviously have to be part of that that piece. So I, Jim, I think we can work together on at least doing exploratory town investigation and the feasibility of this.
Mr. Chairman, the last document that Linda included that she didn't reference yet, but I'm certain she was going to is the Public Works Consolidation Analysis Document. Formed by the Division of Local Services at the Mass Department of Revenue.
Yes.
There was this study done by the Commonwealth. There was a committee put together by a prior Board of Selectmen to determine whether or not there was interest in creating a DPW proper.
Yes, I remember that.
It included water and cemetery parks and highway. And perhaps recycling. The answer was no at the time to full consolidation. I think what Mr. Johansson is talking about is an incremental step in that direction. So I think we have, we have the analysis in hand, and I think she's recommending we take a baby step and do just this one piece first. I think it'd be appropriate if the board would wish to have a meeting with the Board of Health because it currently is in their jurisdiction. And you can decide in the vacuum that you'd like it changed, but you know, I think
It's going to come from them.
They're an elected board and they currently have purview.
Okay, um, so if you can set, if you could set that up for our next meeting, then if they're available, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. Um, is that enough Veronica, Dawn? Do you have anything to add or?
No, I'm fine. I've seen this consolidation in other locations, but most of those that I've seen for recycling. They're under a DPW.
Yeah, so let's take the baby steps as we call them, Jim, and see what we can figure out.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time on that.
Problem. Okay, next Veronica.
4.2.8 Appointments for Conservation Commission. I put this on because at the last meeting, we had read Mike Turgeon's letter. Resigning from the Conservation Commission and we talked about when notice would be to the Board of Selectmen when the clock started for appointments.
Correct.
So that's why this is on here. Since then, Jim, you had sent us the letter from Dave Henkels.
Correct.
I got it twice. The Conservation Commission met last week Wednesday. And he had in his letter. Some stuff and that's why that is on the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could take it in in the justable little pieces, the first is you now, the board have officially been noticed. The Turgeon's resignation. So as of this meeting, when you have officially met. And you have the document, the clock starts. So there's a 30 day window pursuant to our regulations within which the board is the appointing authority. If within that 30 days, the board fails to appoint. It would then revert back to the remaining members of the Conservation Commission to make an appointment. So is that consistent with everybody's understanding?
Yes, so this is basically a call for volunteers for anybody that wants to.
For that vacancy, yes, indeed.
Okay, so let's throw it out there.
And then the second part of the vote that they took. That you've also been given notice on is they have voted to recommend the reappointment of two currently seated members. Karen Hill and Anne Laqueer. So that is something that normally would be on the agenda under the appointment section. So again, it wasn't clear what the the intention was. If it was that appointments would be considered and voted this evening, or if it was just going to be discussion because we had the discussion and we're still waiting on Mr. Turgeon's official notification. But you do have that position having been taken by the commission as well.
I just my position on that is I would rather see it as an official agenda item under appointments. So that people can be prepared because I was not prepared to talk about that tonight.
That same here.
Okay, so we'll move that to appointments on our next agenda. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, if that's, Jim, is that correct?
Yep.
Would that be appropriate?
Okay. Perfect, yeah.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question, please?
Who is this?
This is Dave, Dave Henkels, Conservation Agent, Townsend, Massachusetts.
Sure.
Veronica, you mentioned the letter that you're in possession of, you received earlier today.
The one to Jim from you?
Yes.
The Zoom hearing on July 29th, 2020 confirmed Mike Turgeon's resignation, et cetera.
No, I don't know whether or not you would receive an email that I sent to the board earlier this morning.
I did not receive a email from you.
I did not either.
No, there was, Mr. Chairman, there's a hard copy of a letter that they've handed to me. That because this wasn't on the agenda for for discussions of appointments this evening. And your packets had already been prepared. Last week, you did not yet receive it, but you will for consideration of this item moving forward.
Okay, so that's perfect. We'll have time to review that before the next meeting. Does that satisfy you, Dave?
Oh, thank you for asking. Yes, it does.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next.
Can I just say something on this for conservation appointments? Will there be a, there may already be, I don't know, something put out under the volunteer section on the town website?
Kathy, could you put that out there, please? If you're still
For Mr. Turgeon's vacancy?
Yeah, for
More than Is there more than I think there's more than one.
Yeah, it's a seven member board.
Correct.
There's two vacancies and two reappointments coming up.
Okay.
So Kathy, if you could do that, that'd be great.
Okay, but I need to get it from the Board or Committee.
So Dave, if you can get with Kathy and do whatever's appropriate to get the notification out for volunteers for the two vacant positions, that would be great.
Yes, I'll do that promptly.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
No, I don't want to have just misspoken there. I kind of heard my words as I was saying them. My understanding based on what I have seen in the time that I've been here in Townsend is that the town clerk just said there are two vacancies and two reappointments. What I then said to Dave was work with Kathy on getting volunteer form notifications out for the two vacancies. I did not say for the two reappointments because we do have a vote of the Conservation Commission seeking to reappoint the two seated members. So I don't want to have misstated that. By saying there's, there should be notice notification going out of two vacancy.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you.
Right, homestretch Veronica.
Okay, best practices for email responses and office hours. I guess my question is. And and this is more for you, Jim, I guess, when people send emails, what is the expected response time?
I don't know that there is a policy
Okay.
in place that would dictate what a response time would be. I think it's it's in the usual course of business, no different than than any other organization. I think that in some cases, a response stating that it's been received, but it's going to require some some effort or some time before it responded to in full would be. I think my experience here is being pretty common. But again, it really depends on the request, what's being sought.
Okay, so whether it's from me or Wayne or Dawn or you, a response, an immediate response, like within 24 hours saying, hey, I'll get back to you in a week is appropriate. Or I'll get back to you tomorrow, or I need some time to research, or here it is, it's it's
Sure, if you're, if you're emailing me and I haven't responded back within 24 hours, unless I'm in the hospital, that's a problem. I generally, before I go to sleep and again, when I wake up, I'm looking at my email on my phone, even when I'm not at work. So if it's specific to me, I can say that I would respond back to an email from you and and either have an answer or tell you that I'd look for the answer. Generally, across the organization, that's not going to be the same. Employees aren't taking their email home with them. So if it's a 24 hour period where they are at their workstation. Then I think that that type of a response, either giving the information or acknowledging that it's been received and letting them know a timeframe for the information would be would be the common course.
Okay, all right. And and this next one is specific to you and office hours. When can people expect to find you in?
Well, I think the easiest way to say is by giving a call or an email because my office hours aren't specified. If you look at the provision in my contract regarding office hours, it says, based on the nature of the work. And the need to be out in night meetings like this this evening, the hours of work shall not be specified. Having said that, during school year, when I'm driving my girls to school, I drop them at around 7:30 and you'll normally find me here at around eight or 8:15. During the summer, not so much. So you'll see me closer to nine or 9:30. That's generally speaking. And here until after the building is closed. But again, there's nothing specific about my office hours in this position because of the nature of the work.
I understand that. I guess it would be kind of nice for townspeople to know when they could find you in from week to week. I mean, it doesn't have to be, it's always this or it's always that, but
I think what I just said, I think what I just said Veronica is as good as it's going to get. You know, I'm generally here from either seven during the school, 7:30 during the school year or eight to nine during the summer or 9:30. Through the business day unless I'm out at a meeting at another location or out on PTO.
Okay, so do you let us know when you're out or when you're out sick or when you're on vacation or when you're, who gets a notification on that?
Vacation, which is if it's something in advance, you would all know. I would advise you all, if I'm out sick, I generally send a quick message. It's by and large been by text to the chair. So I notify, I notify Carolyn and the chair.
All right, all right. Um. Okay, that's that one.
Is there a concern about my hours or my availability that I should be aware of?
Well, here's the thing, Jim. I've been reading the MMA handbook and I've been kind of trying to get the answers to things from from that. So that's the reason for the question. I also want to know if someone contacts me and says, I sent this email to Jim and he hasn't gotten back to me, or I sent this email to whoever, Dawn, and he hasn't gotten back to me. Do I say call Wayne and put it all on Wayne? Or what do I do? So I'm just trying to figure out the lay of the land.
Okay, so I'll, I'll have understood this conversation to be general in nature then and not specific to a specific concern you have regarding my time.
We could perhaps say that for now, yes.
I did, and I appreciate you having acknowledged it. Thank you.
Okay, next one. 4.2.10 Municipal Email Address Request. What we got in the packet was a bunch of email addresses for people, some of whom are here and some of whom no longer are. I guess what I want to know is can we get municipal email addresses? In other words, Dawn, Wayne, me, the planning board, the Conservation Commission, any board in town. Can we get, and this is again from the MMA manual. It recommends for open meeting law that people have town email addresses. And now that we've just redone for Office 360 or whatever it was, would it be possible for us to get email addresses?
Not to beat a dead horse, but to have known what you meant by that would have been beneficial because then I could have been I could have had the actual list of what happened today, which is we did convert those people that are here still. So the list you have is is that contains people that no longer work here because those are the active email addresses that still exist on the on the mail server. They may be deactivated for the people, but they're still showing as existing. So as of today. Nearly all offices have been converted in the town hall to our new domain, which instead of being Townsend MA.us. Which is no longer recommended. Will be Townsend MA.gov, so an official government domain.
Dot MA.gov?
Townsend MA.gov. No, no dot in between Townsend and MA, no dash. Sometimes people do, but it's Townsend MA.gov. The current email addresses will continue to work for a period of three months. There will be a disclaimer on each email indicating that we've changed to that new domain and that the old will continue to work for a period of three months, but after that, please make changes in your in your address book. It is recommended and has been recommended that members of at least the Board of Selectmen have town email addresses. When public records are being sought. Email has become a large of what's being sought because so much communication is done electronically. And right now, even if you set yourself up as a Gmail account, which you have done, there is an argument that says that anything in that Gmail account could be reviewed by the Secretary of State's office. You may have inadvertently sent something to a friend using that account that then could have eyes on it. In some cases, people have even had agents in their home looking at their computer to make certain that everything is copasthetic. So in order to avoid all of that, it's always recommended to have a town proper email address. So the fact that you want one, I think is outstanding. And that can be done. The question
I'll gladly transfer over my Gmail to that.
Yeah, same here because the old, the old emails were terrible. I couldn't use it. I got so frustrated. So I set up my own Gmail account that's separate. And it's only used for town business.
Yep, the the question that becomes how far out in the organization do you push it? And that's just a matter of cost. You know, each email address is going to have a cost to it. So if you take it from the select board to then include the just the elected boards perhaps, so you'd have, you know, planning and and Board of Health, school. You then want to take it out to the next branch and have appointed boards and commissions. You're getting pretty far down the line at that point. So we did have a discussion with Guardian, our IT rep just today on that very point. And he's going to be presenting a document that'll show what the cost would be if we wanted to extend it. And we'd be able to look each step of the way down that list. From a cost benefit analysis perspective, what makes best sense.
Okay, perfect.
And yeah, in my mind, it would be all elected boards for starters. I think that anybody that's elected should have a town email address.
So we'll, we'll have that document for you. There's no reason it shouldn't be at your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, Veronica, you are done with your list. Dawn?
I am.
Yes, I was contacted by members of the Water Commissioners. They wanted to have a joint meeting. I tried to set it up for tonight, but after some information that got back to me from from Adam. Decided it was probably not the right time to do it. So what we need to do is set up a separate meeting and the discussions, at least what I was aware of was two things. One was the because the gentleman that that was One was the, because the gentleman that, that was going to take the supervisor position and changed his mind, they wanted to have a discussion about that position going forward. The other was, I guess, the, has to do with the White Mountain contract. I thought we signed it last week, but White Mountain has not been able to start because they have not seen a signed copy.
I could, I can address that, Mr. Chairman, if I could. The, the Warren Department was asked by the town accountant when she was presented the executed contract for her to sign as to the availability of funds for the procurement file, which is part of her function to make certain that the document before and the service for which the contract exists is prepared properly. Wasn't until just today that the final piece of that file was presented by the Water Department. So as of today, that final document came in, I think it, it may be after Lori had left already. So I do have that final piece. Lori will see it tomorrow morning. She'll be able to certify that everything is copesthetic and release the contract.
Okay.
And this, this is something that I, I can't suggest that the Commissioners would have known this, but their staff definitely did. So just before you're thinking that, you know, there's been so much about Town Hall, you know, picking on the War Department from a contracting perspective, that, that's not at all the case here. This is normal course of business. Everybody goes through and staff in the War Department has been, has been aware of it and has been putting documents together.
Okay, I'm just getting frustrated because evidently that, that there's not a lot of discussion between the Commissioners and the, the staff then because I, they didn't seem to be aware of it. But they do want to sit down and discuss the open position and how to approach it going forward again.
Then I'd be happy to have them meet us with at our next agenda, or next agenda, next meeting. So Jim, can you reach out to them and see if they can make the, whatever day that is?
18th, yep.
Please. And Dawn, I agree with you. I can't fix their communication problem, so.
And to point, Mr. Chairman, Lori, Lori has no ox to gore in any of this. You know, she's just, she's got a level of expectation that is buttressed by the regulations. And I think to her credit, she does nearly everything electronically. So to the extent that there, you know, there is any suggestion that the communication hasn't occurred, the record exists. You and I have talked about it before, so.
Yeah, yeah. Need to relive that. Dawn, is that it?
That's it for me on that, yeah.
Okay, 4-3 Clerk of the Board Announcements for Events. I don't think we have any. Am I wrong?
Veronica, do you have any?
Nobody gave me any.
I think 2020 is kind of canceled anyway for events. 4-4 Written Reports from Board Liaisons.
The word written will be removed at the next, the next agenda.
I do have a couple of things under this. One is the DLTA grant. There is a meeting, I think it's Monday night, the next Planning Board meeting, where you should all have received, Jim, you should have received at least a list of that. They're going to be coming in to go over how that works. I think John Hume's going to be present.
I don't know that I've, I don't know that I've seen that, Veronica, so I, we've had some glitches with the email over the last week because of some of the transitioning going on, but I don't recall seeing the DLTA grant information.
Okay, because that was awarded and it's for the Planning Board for the 55 and over. And MRPC is working with the town on that. And there's a kickoff session, I believe it is, during the Planning Board meeting. I could be wrong on that. Next week, I think it's the 10th. Is that correct? Yeah. So I will send it to all of you then so that you're aware of that. And then the other one was the roadway safety audits. Jim, you were going to check in with Pepperell to see if they had the audit done because they're in a different district from us.
They haven't done that as of yet, but I do have that on a list to do, Veronica, and I'll, I'll get that to you shortly.
Okay, because the next meeting is September, early September. So it would be good to know that.
Okay. All right, 4-5 Review and Sign Bills Payable Warrants. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we review and sign bills payable warrants out of session.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Veronica, Cal, yes?
Ray Miller, yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I move we adjourn at 7:58.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Veronica, yes.
I think that was both of you and Wayne Miller, yes. So thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Stay out of the wind.